Is there a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session?
So moved.
Motion made, is there a second? Any discussion, hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Stiches?
Here.
Yes.
Mr. Vasquez?
Yes.
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 Yes. Is there a motion to continue the meeting to Thursday, October 1st at 6:00 PM?
Motion to continue the meeting.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We are now adjourned, the special session is now adjourned. Let's continue until Thursday at 6:00 PM.
I now call this meeting of the Cranston City Council to order.
At this time, would ask all persons to please shut off their cell phones. For the clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Vasquez?
Here. Here.
President?
President.
The air? President?
President.
President. Is there a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the last meeting?
So moved.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Stiches?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Will everybody please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under public acknowledgements and commendations, Councilman Arquette would like to read a citation to Henry W. Arquette on his 100th birthday.
Thank you, Council President Lenny. It's my honor to today bestow proclamation for my dad honoring Henry W. Arquette on his 100th birthday and declaring September 30th Henry W. Arquette Day. Resolve that, whereas Henry William Arquette, son of late Michael and Louisiana Conqueror Arquette, was born on September 30th, 1915, in Cranston Island, whereas Mr. Arquette graduated from Cranston High School, was just Cranston High School then, in 1933, graduated from Providence College, class 1937, bachelor of science, pre-medical, attended Georgetown Medical School in 1939, graduate studies MIT School of Biology and Public Health, Massachusetts in '52, attended the TAP Engineering Center, Cincinnati, Ohio, lectures in laboratory diagnosis in 1965, whereas Mr. Arquette had a long illustrious career in the field of microbiology, starting in 1940 with the state of Rhode Island Department of Health, diagnostic laboratories, established the Food Microbiological Laboratory of the Rhode Island Department of Health in 1965, retired in 1977 as a principal food microbiologist, was the owner and director of the Central Medical Laboratory from 1950 to 1978, and taught elementary bacteriology at Annhurst College, North Woodstock, Connecticut, whereas Mr. Arquette was a frequent public health lecturer and guest lecturer in the New England area from 1970 to 1977, including the University of Rhode Island, and taught elementary bacteriology as well as serving as laboratory consultant for the Veterans Administration from 1947 to 1948, in addition to scientific research related to the sanitation of drinking and eating establishments, and research related to early laboratory diagnostic of tuberculosis in 1941, whereas Mr. Arquette was also a staunch civic leader, including affiliations such as honorary member of Providence Cranston BPOE, chair of the deaf and physically impaired at the Qualus Cooperative Center in Warren, Rhode Island, support for mentally and physically disabled at the Trudeau Center in Warwick, was a lifelong member of the Elks Association and retired member of Chapter 94 AFCME, and a communicator of St. Mary's Church in Cranston. I'd like to wish my dad extended best wishes for his birthday and many, many more happy birthdays, Mr. Arquette. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Arquette, for your failed to mention that your father's being inducted into the Cranston Hall of Fame.
Thank you very much.
Which is another honor, and I think we all salute your father and his long and illustrious career.
Thank you very much.
Public hearings, any member of the public who would like to speak on any doctored item, please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
My name is Art Dofanay. Green light, green button, little button. Ah, there it is. My name is Art Dofanay. My wife Linda, we live at 120, 122 Grand Avenue, a three-family house that we reside in, and I'd like to thank the President, Vice President, and the council for letting us voice our grievances that we have. First, I would like to give you a brief history about myself and my wife. I'm a 40-year retiree of a contractor. I've been residential, commercial, light industrial, and heavy industrial, retired now. And my wife has worked as a bookkeeper and an office manager for a very large building contractor in the state, which builds residential and commercial buildings. I'd like to start off by giving you a mental picture of what kind of issues we're dealing with. My next-door neighbor, Mrs. Fessenda, has had maintenance put on the house just like I have, but in researching everything that has gone through the years, for instance, roof that she's put on, no permit. I put on roofs, I got a permit. She's had vinyl siding put on her house, no permit. I've had vinyl siding put on my house, got a permit. She's had additions on a roof, on a flat roof, that should have had a permit for safety reasons, why? No permit. Replacement windows, no permit. I've had replacement windows, got a permit. Now we can get to the crux of the whole thing. Years ago, she had a strip of asphalt that was put in the side of her house, and it wasn't, she calls it a driveway. It's not engineered as a driveway, it's just a slab of asphalt with a cold joint that abuts mine, my driveway. Since then, which I complained about back then, and I got nowhere with the building department because they said it was, I'm trying to think of a word, in other words, you didn't need a permit to put the driveway in. So throughout the years, my driveway has sunk now five inches. The soil pipe that runs right down the center of the driveway is cast on it, and with the frost heaves and what's happening to my driveway getting damaged, last year I had to take insurance out on the soil pipe, just in case that it broke, but the damage, right now, the estimate's probably up around $25,000 between the driveway having to be replaced and the soil pipe that has to be inspected. Problem being is, even if the soil pipe breaks and I have to have it fixed, I cannot put a driveway back. My driveway is 107 feet long, and it has to be engineered, and as long as this piece of asphalt that's next to it remains there with a cold joint, the same thing is going to happen all over again. So I'm in a real dilemma there. What happened with her in this driveway is that she never pulled the curb permit, never got paid for the curb permit. She had two granite curbs moved, that's 12 feet, there are two six-foot sections, plus the radius to my driveway moved over adjacent to her driveway. Now, I don't know where those granite pieces are, but that should have been returned to the city for inventory for any projects that they might have to replace old-style curbing. There's a difference between old-style curbing and the new curbing now. So any inventory that you can get for old-style curbings would be used in Edred. The new curbings are more for, you know, where the new construction is. So we've lost those two curbings, which would cost anywhere from $300 to $1,200 apiece. I don't know where they are, but whoever did this driveway, they took the pieces and they profited from them. To me, that's larceny. That's one problem. The other problem is that she's got a two-family house now, which was a single-family house. I've been complaining about this for years. There was never a variance called to make it a two-family house. Throughout my time going to the building department to investigate to see what happened, the map that's there is 1965. I'm on medication.
Mr., excuse me. You only can speak for four minutes, I should have said that at the beginning, so.
But pardon?
You only can speak for four minutes, I should have told you that when you first got up, so, and it's in excess of four minutes at this point in time, so if you kind of wrap it up, that's okay to say.
Well, anyways, the map that's there is 1965. The land wasn't split until 1974. There was no variance called for a two-family house, okay? Therefore, that apartment is illegal. Throughout the years, she has tenants in there that they have complained, you know, they've had arguments in that, and I told them, I said, "The apartment's illegal." They go down with a check, they look at the records, the records show something that it should not be. Records, the map, and the card, I don't know who changed them, I don't know who messed around with them, but somebody did. So that apartment is illegal, the paperwork that's at the building department and the card is wrong. I don't know who did it, it wasn't me, but that information, it shouldn't be there. It just shouldn't be there. So what I'm requesting is, I want the two curbings back, my radius back, because I paid for my curb opening, and it's been destroyed, and this apartment closed down. The city is liable for that apartment. I called the bank, the bank will not give any mortgages on illegal apartments, I've called the insurance company, the insurance company, that's a joke. I mean, that's a sidetrack in itself. So anything happens to any tenant in there, whether it's they break a leg, they fall in the tub, God forbid a fire or whatever, the city's liable, and there's national law to this, there's precedents already, you know? That apartment is not, is not an asset to this city, it's a liability. I would thank, I thank the council very much for hearing me.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kirschenbaum, will you look into this matter? Our city's Listel can talk to you off the. Anybody else in the public like to speak on any doctored item? Hearing none, I close this public hearing.
Under resolutions, a resolution requested that the Cranston Historical Society recommend a location for historical marker, commemorating John Gordon, sponsored by Councilman Stychos and Councilman Arquette. Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Councilman Stychos.
Just for people who don't know, John Gordon was the last person who was executed in Rhode Island in, I believe, 1845. He was from Cranston, he was an Irish immigrant and was convicted of murdering one of the Sprague brothers, and this resolution would ask the Cranston Historical Society to determine a location for a historical marker to commemorate that event, and once we get a recommendation from the Historical Society, we can decide if that's where we think it should be, and then I would hope, as the budget process comes up, we can find some money to pay for a historic marker, for a historic marker, and this is a part of history that happened here in our city.
Councilman Arquette.
Thank you, President Lenny. Yes, as to continue what my colleague, Council Stychos, says he was convicted for the murder of Mr. Sprague, but he was later found innocent, and that's why, to this day, Rhode Island doesn't have capital punishment, we have life imprisonment because of this error that was made many years ago in 1845, and I think it's just something that should be remembered and should have some type of flag or monument, and I believe the man came from War 3, so hopefully it'll be in my district. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilman Papalakis.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I'm reading the resolution. It says that most historians believe John Gordon was falsely convicted in the murder. Has that been proven as fact? Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilman Favecchio.
Thank you, Council President. Just one quick question to the sponsor. Do you have a location for it, or is it already located somewhere?
No, I thought that the Historical Society would be, that the resolution is to ask them to recommend a location.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll move on. Clerk, please take the roll for vote on this.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Finance Committee, Councilman Stychos.
Okay, we've got a couple of items. One is, the first is an ordinance dealing with eligibility for the tax exemption for the elderly and disabled.
Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Under discussion, any discussion? Councilman Stychos.
Yeah, what this is, this is a tweak on an ordinance that was passed a couple of years ago, that if you want the elderly tax exemption on your property, you have to either have a car registered at that property or submit a statement that you do not own a car, and the purpose of that is so that people who are claiming their home is here in Cranston, they're registering their car here in Cranston and not in New Hampshire or Florida, as a way to avoid the automobile tax. This change makes it, that this eligibility would have to be reviewed by the assessor every five years, that was the tax assessor's recommendation to the committee, so that's the one change, is it specifies a five-year review of the exemptions. So it was passed unanimously by the Finance Committee.
Okay, and any discussion? Councilman Asido.
Yeah, through the chair. Councilman Stychos, just in, as I recall at the hearing, the tax assessor was here, they pretty much do this anyways without ordinance, isn't that right?
I think he did it after we passed the ordinance, the original ordinance.
Right.
And, so, what I, the purpose of this ordinance is to get a regular review of this, so that, you know, if the one member of the family turns 65 and they're eligible for the exemption, and then 10 years later they move to Florida, well, then they should, and register their car there, they shouldn't get the exemption after 10, you know, for the next period.
Didn't he tell us how many people this would involve, roughly about 20 people, 30 people? Was the number higher than that?
About 20 people that he had narrowed down through his process of cross-checking between the motor vehicle records and the tax records and the voter registration records.
So that's 20 people that would need to come in every five years to apply for the exemption?
No. Yeah.
Councilman Shamri.
I thank you, Council President. I think we moved it up to five years to match the revale, because Sal said it was rather time-consuming, and doing it every three years would take a lot of personnel, so we moved it up to five, that's what the committee matched it to the revale date, if I remember that correctly.
Are you any other discussion? Councilman Box.
Thank you, Council President. I voted in favor of this in committee, but I've had a change of heart, I'm going to be voting against this. For the small amount of people, I think that this affects, and whatever other burdens we have on the elderly in the city, I think it's just, you know, it's just one more hoop that they have to jump through in order to prove clearly they're elderly and deserve the exemption. I think they've earned this exemption through years and years of labor, working throughout their time, and, you know, to make them go through this hoop, even though it's every five years, I just, doesn't sit right with me, so I will be voting against this. I see the effort that's involved here, but for the amount of people that it affects, I just don't see it as being worthwhile. Thank you.
A question. Councilman Favecchio.
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair, to the sponsor. Does Sal do this every so many years automatically, based on the prior ordinance?
No. That's what triggered this ordinance, was that he said to the Finance Committee, this was a while ago, that once you qualify, he doesn't review it.
Okay.
So, yeah, I don't think that the point isn't whether there are 20 people or not this year, it's that you should have your car registered in Cranston in order to get an elderly tax break.
I, you know, I mean, I understand the spirit of it, and I guess you're right, they should probably register their cars in Cranston, although I'm more concerned with the hundreds of people that may have their children registered in the schools and don't have their cars registered in Cranston. I just wish it was extended to a broader base of people rather than just the elderly, because I think that there's probably a lot more issues there than there are with, you know, 20 or so people here, but, and the only thing that's not so difficult about this is that it's every five years, which is a long period of time, so, I mean, in theory, I don't have too much of a problem with it, although I don't like burdening the elderly either. They deserve their tax exemptions when they reach 65, and they'll still get it under the ordinance, but I think we should consider some other areas as well.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Fox?
No.
Councilman Ray O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
No.
Councilman Ross?
No.
Councilman Larry Fricke?
Yes.
Councilman Alton Serry?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Continue, Council Chairman Stychos.
Okay, just one second here, my computer on the right page. Okay, the next item is the real estate tax, real estate? The next item is the real estate tax amendments as recommended by the tax assessor.
Is there a motion? Motion approved. Second.
Second.
Well, under discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Stychos? Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Ray O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilman Larry Fricke?
Yes.
Councilman Alton Serry?
Yes.
Yes.
Let me have the motor vehicle tax amendments recommended by the tax assessor.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Ray O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilman Larry Fricke?
Yes.
Councilman Alton Serry?
Yes.
Yes.
And we have the tax interest waivers recommended to be approved by the city treasurer.
Motion approved. Second. Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Ray O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilman Larry Fricke?
Yes.
Councilman Alton Serry?
Yes.
Yes.
And finally, we have the denials of requests for tax interest waivers, the denials recommended by the city treasurer.
Motion to approve the denials.
Second. Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Ray O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilman Larry Fricke?
Yes.
Councilman Alton Serry?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, move on to Safety Services and License, Chairman Asido.
Thank you, Council President. We have two licenses, Class B Victorian that are above the cap, so they require full council approval. First one is Red Lounge Restaurant, number 83, 355 Diarraville. The committee met and recommends passage.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Ray O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilman Larry Fricke?
Yes.
Councilman Alton Serry?
Yes.
We also have a transfer from Class B Limited to Class B Victorian. This is again above the cap, requires full council approval, Felina Pizzeria, 2190 Ford Street.
Motion to approve? Second. Motion made in second, any discussion on the motion? Councilman Stychos.
Not being on the committee, could you explain the difference between a Class B Limited and a Class B Victorian?
She, when originally built down there, she had just beer and wine. Class BV is a full liquor license, she's going from beer and wine to full.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Stychos?
No.
Fox?
Yes.
Ray O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilman Alton Serry?
Yes.
Councilman Larry Fricke?
Yes.
Councilman Alton Serry?
Yes.
That's it for our Safety Services.
Thank you. Claims Committee, Chairman Favecchio.
Thank you, Council President. Claims committee met, we settled five small matters, probably totaling $1,000, so, and I think this is the last of our, some of our, I don't think we have any more pothole or snow removal issues pending, so we settled those five claims, and we had some other issues that were in executive session, and that's all I have.
Councilman Asido.
Yes, just before we go into public hearings again, I noticed that there was no ordinance committee report on the agenda. Was there not some items we heard last month, and if they were, I just would make a motion that they get put on next month. I believe there was something to do with the traffic engineer, that ordinance. Continue that?
To the committee meeting.
And the city clerk?
Okay, I stand corrected, thank you.
We will continue.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to public hearings again. Any member from the public who would like to speak on any item, please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
So once again, I want to encourage those who have the privilege, the privilege of making a decision for Sergeant Josephson, that they stand up and be counted and do what has to be done, I know, I believe there's still an ordinance on them to be considered, I think that's been continued, I think everybody knows what that ordinance calls for, if anybody wants to argue that, the only argument might be if we have one more sergeant on the payroll from now until he or she retires, and then we pay whatever pension that that pays to pass, it would increase the overall cost of the city's budget, there's no question about that, however, I think sometimes when you look at something like that, fairness has to be what generates the proper way to handle something like this, and I think each of you know that, that situation, again, I'll say, and I always have to say, unless there's something I don't know, I don't know, if there's something that's going on within the department that I'm not aware of, however, he was cleared, as you all well know, about the charges that were brought against him, so once again, I think you should do everything that you can to make sure that this situation is brought to a successful conclusion, that being giving him his proper rank, if I can, Mr. President, one last thing, it doesn't happen very often that I was privileged to be at the State House when my cohort here, Nick, was given an honor in the State House, I know you were there also, and it brings to mind very clearly to me, I would give him what you might call a citizenship award, I don't give out too many, but Nick, no matter what side of the issue you're on, always is amiable, always has a good word, always tries to do his best, as a matter of fact, there's been a rumor that someone might ask Dr. Bennett to come and separate us as Chinese twins here in the first period, but, once again, I think, I would like to publicly say what a pleasure it is to know a gentleman and the work that he does, much of which I'm not aware of and maybe any of you are aware of, he's kind of a stealth candidate, if you will, we will no doubt become the opposite ends of the male race this year, but I know that will do nothing to, for our reputation, and that's Nick, thank you, Nick.
Anybody else in the public to speak on any item? Hearing none, I close public hearings. Before we continue, I'd like to take something out of order, and I'd like to have a suspension of the rules, and it concerns the historical cemetery at Chapelview. Motion to suspend the rules. Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll on that.
Counselor Styches?
Yes.
Counselor Fox?
Yes.
Counselor Ray Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Seale?
Yes.
Counselor Boskis?
Yes.
Counselor Larry Fickell?
Yes.
Counselor Maney?
Yes.
Anybody from the historical commission here this evening? No? Okay. Anybody here from the Division of Facilities Management?
Hi.
Please give your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Dan Kukowski, 19 Fieldstone, I'm with the Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance, and President, council members, I appreciate your hearing, our request for permit to work within the 25-foot buffer of State Historic Cemetery Number One, it is located over on the Pastory complex, last year I came before you regarding temporary stabilization and Phase One of the project to basically reestablish the cemetery, place the gravestones that were lost during previous floods, and basically put the cemetery and the railroad bed back together in its original condition, I'm coming before you for Phase Two and the final phase of the project to remove the temporary stormwater controls that were put in place and put in permanent, the drawings that I've given everyone a copy of represent the DEM-approved plans dealing with stormwater management and also establishing the railroad bed back to its original condition, we would not be doing any work inside the cemetery, however, we would be infringing on that buffer, anyone have any questions about the project?
Any questions from members of the council? Okay, Counselor Seale.
Just through the chair to, is a solicitor here or to Mr. Quinlan, the reason why we have a cemetery commission run like most municipalities, so ultimately, they have to approve something before we have to do work, is that correct?
I know, sir, is that? Check it right now. Okay, the Historic Preservation Commission did write a letter in support of this, I don't, I believe that is efficient, it's a council decision at this point to allow the changes?
If I could add to that, there are a couple of organizations, Historic Preservation and Heritage Commission, which we've gone in there in support of the project, we did a site tour last year showing the existing conditions, you know, pre, pre-construction, and showed not only the city planner, senior planner Lynn, Historic Preservation and Heritage Commission, as well as the other governing historic cemetery organizations in the state.
Counselor Seale again.
Yeah, just one more quick question, I know this is like a phased project, but in one of the recommendations by Lynn Fury, there was some other drawings and whatnot, and there's a proposed rendering of how it's gonna look when it's completed, is that correct? Is that, that's eventually what it's gonna look like?
Yes, well, actually, that's, that's an aerial photo, I believe.
No, there's another one here, that was part of Lynn Furney's.
Yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
It looks like the Sockenos.
Through the chair?
Sockenos.
There are two separate permit requests on this evening.
Is that separate?
That is the copy-nato request.
Okay.
Two separate.
That's a separate one.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, Counselor Seale?
Are we okay? Any other questions from any of the members of the council? The city clerk, do we have to take a vote on this?
Yes, it requires council approval.
Okay. Motion to approve. Second. Motion made in second, any other discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Counselor Styches?
Yes.
Counselor Fox?
Yes.
Counselor Ray Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Seale?
Yes.
Counselor Boskis?
Yes.
Counselor Maney?
Yes.
Counselor Boskis?
Yes.
Counselor Maney?
Yes.
Counselor Boskis?
Yes.
Counselor Maney?
Yes.
And now we'll go on to the copy-nato group, the Chapelview Project.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it does.
Please, your name and your rec, your name and address for the record, please.
Alan Allstrom, I'm the landscape architect for Copy-Nato Group, on the historical cemetery that is the set that we're looking at there, the rendering, that is what we're going for, it was surveyed, and the existing bounds were located, we're working just outside those existing bounds, but within the 25-foot setback, historically, what was on the property, what was there before the chain link fence was put up, was a post and chain type of, around the entire cemetery, and what we're looking at doing is we're looking at bringing something back, but in much durable, so we're looking at coming in with the concrete, not the concrete, sorry, the granite posts and the chains with intermediary cast iron posts, and we're doing that to separate it from the remaining rails and guardrails on the side, are more of a standardized aluminum extruded sort of individual slack rail on that, the plantings that are going around it are either, are all under an 18-inch excavation, largest excavations just outside those areas would be 36 inches to be able to get below frost with the pros and posts to make sure that they are durable throughout the time.
Any questions from members of the council? Counselor Vecchio.
Thank you, Council President, sir, where, where is it located in the complex?
I'm sorry, if you were on Sockenos at Cross Road opposite the entrance to Garden City, and you were to look up the hill towards the chapel grill. Yes. It's just to the left and mid-level, so, parking lot, you can, when you come in that driveway, you can turn to the right and then come up underneath chapel grill. Yes. There's a stairway that goes up there, and a stairway that goes up now, up on the left side, in that parking area on that left side is where the existing is now, right now it's overgrown grass, and then there's a dilapidated chain link fence around it. So it's, it has some distance from the new Panera Drive through? Yes, yes. Okay, but it would also help preserve that spot, so we wouldn't have cars hitting the area. Yes, it keeps it, you know, it's far enough setback from the curb that the posts won't be hit, but it also has that same look to, if you're familiar with the historical beech tree that's up near Shaw's, that also has the granite posts and chains going there, so we're looking at keeping that same feeling, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Styches?
Is, who, is this a cemetery connected with the, any of the institutions, or it's a?
It had been put on institution ground originally, I believe it was a benefactor, those parts are a little bit more sketchy when it comes to the historical significance, but the graves date back to 1740, so it was there probably prior to the actual historic school for the training of boys.
You know, I guess I'd just suggest some kind of marker that explains what it is.
We could provide a little bit more history on some marker there, it does currently have the identification marker by the state for these historic cemeteries, 052, I believe it is, so it does have that.
Yeah, but it doesn't tell you.
It doesn't go through and have any type of historic.
Just to suggest, yeah, it might be a nice touch.
Oh, I will bring it back to my client, I'm sure that he will want to, to be able to comply with that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Counselor Styches?
Yes.
Counselor Fox?
Yes.
Counselor Ray Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Seale?
Yes.
Counselor Boskis?
Yes.
Counselor Maney?
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 Yes.
Thank you very much.
Report of city offices.
Through the chair?
Yes.
The gentleman with regard to the first request that the council approved for the burial permit left an updated map and some progress photos that he wanted to present to the council, he asked me to distribute them to you.
All right, we'll give a chance to distribute to the council members. Meanwhile, we'll look for a standing monthly report on the cited properties of the city, Counselor Box?
I don't have the report, but I was, I was gonna suggest, rather than having this a monthly item on the docket, maybe we could just receive this via email every month, it would seem to be more efficient than having to put this on the docket every, every month, I think it's been a worthwhile effort, I'd like to see addresses as well, but I think this is something that I think I would hope all the council people would feel is worthwhile seeing what's being cited in their ward, so, I'd be available to that instead of having it on the docket every month, thank you.
I'll check with the city clerk, does anybody agree or disagree with that idea? All right, I'll have the city.
I agree, I can see it.
I'll have the city clerk put it on an email form from this point on. Executive Communications, hiring a special counsel, consultant, et cetera, is there any report from the administration?
Mr. President, the city law department has distributed a report to the members of the council, giving our monthly report on the hiring of special counsel, consultants, et cetera, including the cost, and happy to answer any questions from the members of the council.
Any questions on the, Counselor Sam Ray?
Thank you, Council President, Director Coop. Callahan and Callahan, Antonucci, Leabour, 50% of the bill, can you explain that, third item?
I'll have to check with our solicitor on that, Counselman, and I'll get an answer for you, I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay, can you get it tonight, or do you wanna continue it to next month, or?
I'll, I'll see if I can get it for you before the end of the meeting.
Thank you, Council President.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, Crescent Fire Department request for continuation of service, Mr. Coop, you want me to handle that, or you wanna handle?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll take care of it, we have a request from Deputy Fire Chief Paul DeLeese, having reached his 56th birthday, has requested to be continued in service for one year, we have documentation to evidence his fitness for service, and I recommend that the council approve that request.
Motion to approve. Second. Motion made in second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Counselor Styches?
Yes.
Counselor Fox?
Yes.
Counselor Seale?
Yes.
Counselor Boskis?
Yes.
Counselor Maney?
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 Yes.
Counselor Maney?
Yes.
Counselor Boskis?
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 Yes.
Counselor Maney?
Yes.
And finally, Mr. President, Lieutenant Kevin Annesley of the Cranston Fire Department, having reached his 58th birthday, has requested to be continued in service for one year, I have received documentation indicating his fitness for service and recommend approval.
Motion to approve. Second. Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Counselor Styches?
Yes.
Counselor Fox?
Yes.
Counselor Seale?
Yes.
Counselor Boskis?
Yes.
Counselor Maney?
Yes.
Counselor Boskis?
Yes.
Counselor Maney?
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 Yes.
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 I apologize, Mr. President, one more. Private James Monjo of the Cranston Fire Department has reached his 65th birthday and has requested to be continued in service for one year. He likewise has submitted documentation evidencing his fitness, and I recommend approval of that as well.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion made, second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the vote.
Councilperson Stike?
Yes.
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 Okay, sealed by the solicitor, EMC Insurance, for Leonard Nulman, $6,419.36 vehicle damage. Lexley Gluchaki and Abrams and Viera, $4,500, personal injuries.
Next, Council President, communications. I'm asking for administrative report on the physical cost of the Antonucci and Padalano settlements, including all legal fees, depositions, and any other related costs.
Council President, what I came up with is I have legal fees for Major Padalano totaling to date from our legal department, $203,616. There was the settlement that was just agreed upon for $300,000. There was salaries that incurred during this period of time from 4/9/12 to 9/10/12, including wages and benefits of $61,858. And from 9/10/12 to 1/7/14, wages and benefits of $172,813, for a total of $738,287.
$738,000, how much?
$287,000.
Seven.
Padalano.
That's just a Padalano.
Correct.
Did you also include the fees for the officer who covered his job?
No, I did not, because I'm not sure if it was done through overtime, if it was a certain individual. That's something I have to get from the police department.
Can you get those figures for us?
Yes, I'll attempt to. I tried to get some figures today, and it didn't seem to work out, so I will continue.
All right.
These are figures I got from our payroll department.
So the settlement cost, actually, in the Padalano legal case, was not $300,000. It was $738,000 in climbing, if you take the legal, if you take the cost of the officer who had to replace him for two years while he's on administrative leave. That differential has to be added to this figure. Do you continue?
Yes. Captain Antonucci, there wasn't really a settlement per se based on legal bills, $171,676 to date. His wages from 4/3/14 to 9/25/15 would be $168,849, plus benefits of $48,837. From 9/25 to 4/15/16, when is the date that he's going to be retiring, it is $68,012,40 in benefits.
Sixty.
$68,012,40 in benefits. Also, at that time, it's estimated that he will, he's utilizing this comp time and vacation time as we speak to come up with these numbers. However, it is estimated that there'll be a severance payout of about $40,000 at April 15th. With that $40,000, it brings the total to $509,402. Again, if there was anyone that's filled in for him, I don't have that information, but I'll have to try to see if I can seek that from the police department's payroll records.
All right, so the total settlement between the two individuals from the information gave us is approximately $1,300,000. Am I correct?
It's a million 240, 250,000.
All right. A million 240,000. There's a dollar on the tax payers.
Two forty.
All right, that's equivalent to $1 on the tax rate. Thank you for your provided this information, Mr. Strom, I appreciate it. Of course, our internal order is looking for additional information. I hope you'll be as forthcoming with him as you have been with me.
I always have a good working relationship with Mr. Moretti, Councilman. We've already met once, and we intend to continue the meetings.
Okay, because I know I directed him to contact you concerning the total cost of this police fiasco back in August, and I believe he sent the first email to you on August 14th.
That is correct.
And this is the first information we're getting to date on this, as far as I know.
That is correct. There's legitimate reasons why it's been delayed, Councilman.
I've known you a long time, and I'm sure you're correct. Thank you, Mr. Strom. Any questions from anybody on the council? Councilman Arquero?
Thank you, Council President. My only question would be on the Antonucci matter. It's costing, you see, thus far, $509,402, is that roughly correct?
Mr. Strom?
That should be the total cost through April of 16.
No, that doesn't include the city of Cranston paying his health care until he's 65, am I correct?
Well, it did include, no, it doesn't. No, that's correct.
It does not, so there's another cost that's involved to the city, correct?
But that would be for any retiree. They are eligible for that up until age 65. It's not just.
We're paying him for not working. If this didn't happen, he'd be working and contributing to that, correct?
Yes.
So it is a cost that we're incurring.
But what I'm saying is if he was working and retired in April of 16, he'd still be eligible for that health.
I understand that, correct? But he would be paying into it until he retired. What we're doing now, we are preempting his retirement, so we're picking up that cost of his health care until he's age 65.
Well, as we're paying him, he's still contributing health care as a regular employee. Okay.
Any other questions? Councilman Stikos? Sorry, Councilman Box, we're in the same.
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair, Director Strom. Isn't that health care though a variable cost? If Captain Antonucci was to retire, then be employed, say, until he was 65, and he had health insurance to that employment, we wouldn't be paying his health insurance, unless there's some sort of difference between those two plans?
That is correct. The only way we'd pay 100% is if he did not work from, I think he's going to be 43, I'm not quite sure, until 65. Then the city would be on the hook for 100% of the cost. However, at that age, I would assume, like many of the other officers, they usually get other employment. Then we have to compare the benefit package of what we have to what they'd be offered, because they have to elect that health care coverage.
Right.
And then we would pay the difference only, which is much, we have about at least 20 people that are in that plan right now as we speak.
All right, sorry, and I'm not going to defend Captain Antonucci on any of this. I just want to make it known that it's a variable cost, and it's very tough to put down on paper going forward, so.
Yeah, I mean, at a young age that he is, I would assume he's going to seek employment. I could be wrong, but it would make sense to me.
Thank you. Councilman Seo?
Thank you, Council President. I have to ask my colleagues, we're talking about this like it's chump change. Where's the outrage here? Where are the people in the audience that were talking about how the mayor did such a good job and let's move on? Well, if I had 1.3 million to pay, I'd ask everyone to move on and forget about it. Where's the outrage? There's got to be some sort of outrage here. $1.3 million.
So far.
So far. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Where's the outrage? Or is this political, as we were told when we asked these questions? Is this political, that there's no outrage from the Republicans?
Councilman, go back to you.
Thank you, Council President. Well, yeah, I am outraged over the cost, but interesting fact, if you look at it, we considered one of these cases a winning case and one of them a losing case. It cost us a half a million for a winning case and maybe 750 so far on a losing case. So you're right, there are problems with both, but there are bigger problems, because even if we're, even in a winning case, it's going to cost us a substantial amount of money. The legal fees were almost the same on both cases. And Padalano lasted a lot longer than Antonucci, and we had no control on the Antonucci case. So I certainly think that there are issues, there are management issues, and there are also issues with the Leabour process, which allows this to continue for such a long time and run up the costs. Whether you win or lose, you lose either way, that's the bottom line in these cases, because we pay our legal fees regardless of whether we win or lose on one of these cases. So I agree with you, there are problems, but we need to address all of them and not just single out one issue.
Councilperson Seo?
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Director Strom, out of this 1.2 million dollars, obviously, a good chunk of this was already paid in previous budgets. Approximately how much of this 1.2 will we have to pay in this budget cycle?
The $300,000 for the settlement, we've already set aside in the reserve, so we had the money for that. The legal fees are part of the legal expense during the course of the timeframe that this occurred. So that would be from when it started to right up to date in September. Okay, so I can't, it's over a period of probably two to three fiscal years.
So from a financial standpoint, whatever, the $300,000 plus whatever else comes with Captain Antonucci, that money's already in this budget, so we're not running up a deficit?
Well, the only way we'd be running up a deficit is I'd have to look at all the legal costs in the legal department and to see if that as a total is running over budget.
Okay, so.
Okay, but it's part of that.
Okay, so we could be running a couple hundred thousand dollars in the hole here, correct? Or more or less, or is that too high a number in your estimation?
No, I don't think it's too premature for fiscal year 16, because I only have two months of history right now.
Okay.
All right, and also just keep in mind, and I know it's a big number, I'm not even stating otherwise, but of the 1,250, you're looking at four, almost 700,000 is legal fees in the settlement. It's not monetary wages. That's only about a half a million combined. So most of it is the settlement and the legal fees. And we were proactive last year to estimate what these legal, the settlement fees would be, and we set aside the money to take care of that for this year.
As part of this settlement, is the city paying any of Captain Antonucci's legal fees?
I'm not aware of that.
Director Coop, could you possibly answer that?
Captain Antonucci was represented by a lawyer that was hired by his union.
And Major Padalano had to go private because they wouldn't give him a lawyer?
I can't speak to anybody's reasons.
Any other questions? I'll make a few comments. Mr. Strom, did we pay the legal fees for Colonel Plomo in the suit? Comedy and Chaplin? Who paid their legal fees? I know they were represented by the council. I assume it's the city must have paid those legal fees.
In which case was that in the?
Against.
So that had to be the Padalano case, Mr. President. There may have been a de minimis amount that the city paid, but for the most part, each of the defendants paid their own legal fees.
Okay, now I'll go back to Mr. Strom again. When, I'll use Captain Padalano as an example. When Captain Padalano was put on administrative leave for two years, I assume a lieutenant had to step up to cover his job at a differential or a time and a half, whatever the case is. And also, if that's the case, then a sergeant had to step up to the lieutenant's place, and a patrolman had to step up to the sergeant's place. And the cumulative effect of all those differentials, we don't have here in this scenario, and I think we need them. To get a complete objective cost to the taxpayer of this city, how much this entire fiasco, which is still going on, because lawsuits are not done yet, we still have Mr. Josephson, and we have Captain Gilbo. We still have ongoing lawsuits, and I don't know where it's going to end, but I know it's going to cost the taxpayers of the city an awful lot of money unnecessarily, and I repeat, unnecessarily. This all should have been settled and straightened out in the very, very beginning, and I blame Mayor Fund for this. He knew what's going on, he did nothing about it. And now we are going to bid dealing for this. So when Mr. Moretti asks you for the additional information that he's been looking for since August, I hope you comply and do your best to give him the information. Council member communication. Councilman Stikos, you want to make a comment before we move on?
Yes, yes, I have a question on, for Director Strom about the salary figures. Does that include pension contributions, payroll taxes, Medicare?
That includes salary and all benefits, yes.
Good, thank you. And I would just, I'd just like to point out that the mayor had an opportunity to settle the Padalano case for $98,000 instead of $300,000, and he turned that down. And when I asked him about that a month ago, he said that, oh, that was because the union should have paid the $98,000. Did the union pay any money in this settlement with Mr. Padalano?
I'm not aware of it, and I don't, I can't comment on that. I don't think so. At least we didn't see that, if that's what you mean, as like a reimbursement. Is that what you're referring to?
I'm referring to.
Well, what I'm saying is if they paid, it didn't flow through the city. Okay?
Is there anyone, Mr. Coop, anyone else know if the union paid any money in this settlement, the point that the mayor was so adamant about?
Councilman, that I don't know, but I have to find out for you.
Good, thank you. I'd just like to say that, you know, this is a major, this is the mayor's response to my question, and I don't think the union paid anything, which maybe they shouldn't have paid anything, but that was the excuse for not settling, and we don't even know whether it happened. Thank you.
Councilman Box?
Thank you, Council President. I would just like to address one thing that was said a misrepublican outrage by Vice President Santa Maria. I think if you check my Twitter feed, I've expressed my outrage at this, that has occurred, cost to the taxpayers. But the problem is, is that this has been ongoing, and not just these cases, but whether you go back to the Corrula lawsuits that were so unnecessary, that wasted a ton of taxpayer money. You go back to the prayer banner at Cranston West, that again wasted taxpayer money. Right now, 38 Studios is coming out, and I'm outraged at 38 Studios. I am outraged that taxpayer money is being wasted, no matter where you turn, in the city and the state. So yes, there is an outrage. So yes, there is an outrage, and I think it needs to be curbed immediately. You have a lawyer, even today, asking EDC, oh, you know, 38 Studios should be in my in-laws' place that I own on the street over here. How ridiculous is that? You know, so there is outrage here, and it's true that these could have been settled probably long ago, and we shouldn't have had this much waste. But to say that this is new, and this is something that we should have outraged over, I've been outraged for a year, that's why I originally ran for state rep, and that's why I originally ran for city council, because of the outrage and the waste that occurs in this state. So yes, I am outraged, and I'm sorry to have expressed that earlier, but in the history of going on here, I have been outraged. Thank you.
Counselor Santa Maria.
Thank you. May I respond to Counselman Box? The reason I said that was because we were accused of making it political when we had to know confidence vote by the other party, people in the audience, Republican chairman. Remember all those people who said it was political? So I'm just bringing that up because it may be political, but I have $1.3 million to be dispelled at this settlement. Thank you.
Counselman Akado.
Thank you, Counselman President. I just want to comment that I know how hard this council worked during the budget session, and the idea is that Counselman Lucido came up with Counselman Santa Maria, Counselman Stychos and others, and Counselman Vivek Yeo, and we worked really hard to save the taxpayer. Mr. Murray, was it 10 cents on the dollar roughly in the last budget?
Eight, eight cents.
Something like that. And we really worked long hours, and then to see how the mayor and the executive branch just squander 1.2 million, 1.3 million dollars frivolously on unnecessary lawsuits is just an insult to how hard this council works, and we have a taxpayer in a budget session. And I just want to reiterate to the mayor that he needs to get down and roll his sleeves up and try to tighten his belt, and let's not waste money foolishly. This is outrageous. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing no one else, we'll move on to counsel member communications. Counselman Stychos?
Yes. Thank you. Do we have any report on the scaffolding at 176 Patuxahata Avenue?
Regarding eternal life scaffolding, I spoke with Director Pyke, and he is working with the homeowner who is doing the work by himself. Last he had checked, it should, it should have been coming down. He didn't have a chance to get out there today to check, but they do have an agreement that it is coming down. The reason why it took so long is it was a one-man job, who, he was just doing the repairs himself.
Yeah, that's not accurate, but I realize that you don't know that. It's been up there for years. One man, you know, that's, now he's doing something about it apparently, but it's been up for years. Okay, thank you though, for staying on top of that. The second issue, Mr. Kishinbaum, come back.
Hi.
Can you talk at all about this 124 Grand Avenue issue?
Well, I met with Arthur Windha, just in the conference room just now. It's the first time I've heard of the issue, so I'll be looking into that. Apparently, there are problems on that street dealing with 120, 120, 122, and 124 Grand Avenue, as well as parking on the street that Arthur feels is illegally being done. So I'm going to take a look at that for Arthur.
Okay, I think, I met with him.
Yeah, he told me that.
Quite, quite a while, and I guess the, the thing I thought, he filed formal complaints with the building inspector on July 28th on four specific issues, and I feel he should get an answer from the building inspector. And whether it's, you know, your crazy art, or we're not going to do anything about it, or whatever, he just should get an answer. And he, he didn't get an answer, and that's why I put it on the agenda. I realize it's a complicated issue, it's kind of a, two property owners, but people should get responses to their, their complaints. And I realize you're just coming into it now.
No, I mean, I think it is a real issue. I intended to devote time to it to get an answer for Arthur Windha, and I'll keep you updated in the process.
Okay, thank you. I had a couple of other issues that aren't on the agenda. One is, I would say, a year and a half ago, the Department of Transportation said they would restrike Norwood Avenue to delineate just two lanes. Director Mason was going to look into seeing what the state was doing that. Do we know anything about that?
Counselman, I was not aware of that issue, but I'll check with Mr. Mason.
Okay, thank you. I have got a couple more you might be aware of. Mr. Coop. One of them is the, a constituent asked about the cost of the micro burst or macro burst storm. And do we have an estimate of what the cleanup cost on that was?
The cost was primarily tree removal. There is a number, I don't remember off the top of my head. I know it was, okay, our finance director can help me out here.
Counselman, I'm not aware of what the compensation is to the employees for doing this, if there was any overtime. However, I do know from our vendor, we have two bills. One was through Public Works to do the cleanup, and another through Poxon Rec. And if you add the two together, you're looking at about $350,000.
And that's all borne by the city, is that right?
That is correct.
Because it wasn't declared an emergency.
That is correct.
350,000?
Correct. We weren't eligible, we looked into, seeing if we would be femoral eligible, and unfortunately, it wasn't, because it was just a, like a pathway that went through Cranston, West Warwick, and Warwick, it wasn't a big enough area to constitute enough dollars. So unfortunately, we were proactive to take care of the issues as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you. The last thing is, there were, there was recently a recruitment effort for the police department to fill a number of positions. Is that complete, and do we know if any women or minorities were hired as part of that group?
I believe the application period has ended, but the candidates are now undergoing physical and psychological examinations, and at this point, a final list of applicants has not been produced, so I don't know who's on that list yet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Counselman Akado.
Thank you, Counselman President. I have a request to the administration, to the chair of the administration, do I have a report on the roads, total square footage being paved in each ward? I'd like to see that, I've never received, I think I've been asked, it's the second month I ask for that.
Yeah, I understand, Counselman, that Director, Public Works Director Mason distributed that at the last Public Works committee meeting, but I did bring a copy that I can give to you after the meeting.
And one more, I have two fire hydrants in my ward that have been overgrown by foliage, if you can get a crew out there to trim around them. The first is on Farmington Avenue between Dyer and Civil Lake Avenue. Do we, do we copy that down?
And the second?
The second is at the corner of Brown Street and Whale Street.
Brown Street.
You can't see them because the foliage is just overgrown, I think we need to trim around them.
Okay.
Counselor Vice President Santa Maria.
Thank you, Counselman President. I would like to take Midvale Avenue, the water leak is, was being repaired this afternoon, so I'd like to take that off of the list that's being done, thank you to the administration. I do have a question that I asked last meeting, are we following up on utility companies, are they coming in for street opening permits? And are they letting the administration know that they're opening up a street? I just wanted an update on that.
Counselman, I posed that question to Director Mason, and he said that utility companies aren't in compliance with the permit requirements for opening roads. Occasionally, they are required to do emergency repair work, and they have to dig up the road before they get the permit, but they do come back and comply with the permit requirement as soon as, as soon as possible.
All right, just can I ask another question based on that? Are they letting Highway know? Because when I call Ken or John Corso, it's news to them that a street's being worked on that morning. So I'm concerned that they're not letting you know completely 100% on street openings because I've talked to Ken a couple of times, and he said, you know, what street? And he's gone and checked it out, but he didn't know at the time that I.
He may not know the day that they're opening it because they will put in an application, and they'll list a number of streets in one application. The engineer, the engineering looks at that application and issues the permit, he's not necessarily going to remember every single street, and they may not be open for a few weeks after the permit's approved.
So should, but shouldn't the highway superintendent know that, you know, they are our streets, so?
I, I'm not sure what the process is for communicating that list, but I will talk to our highway superintendent and our public works director about.
Don't yell at him because he used to be honest with me, he just doesn't know that they're opening up the streets, and I would think common courtesy to.
I would never yell at those guys, they do a good job.
I just would hope a common courtesy that they're letting us know on the street for traffic issues and other things.
I'm confident that they are getting the required permits.
All right, well, thank you. While I have you up here, this is something new I'd like you to check into. Billboards. Are we getting permit fees, permits being taken out and fees paid on billboards?
I will find out and let you know.
I'm curious if you could find that out for me for the next meeting. And one last thing. What is the status on Patrolman Josephson? I know we.
He has engaged, I understand he's engaged counsel. We have our attorney who has reached out to his counsel, and we're waiting for some sort of response.
I see, we consider talks being active still?
Yes.
Okay, and we're still looking at that 16-day timeframe that the union president said?
That's, that's an optimistic estimate.
Well, I'm an optimistic guy.
As am I, Counselman.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on, Counselman Box.
Thank you, Counselman President. I'm going to start with some good news items that's not on the docket. First, kudos to Poxon Rec. The other day, I mentioned the lights were not going on at Doric Field, and I think there's been a history of things going on there at night that are not good for the neighborhood. So Tony Libertori was out there the same day, replaced a photocell and some light bulbs, and Doric Field is now being lit at night. So thank you, thank you to Poxon Rec and Tony for doing that. Also, 82 Autumn, there was a tree that was, I guess weakened or dead, and Highway, also almost the same day, I mentioned that Highway was out to take down that tree, and so I appreciate that, and kudos to John Corso as well. Also, going by the ice rink, it looks like the bubble rink is going back up, or it looked like work was being done to, with the new, I assume the new bubble to be inflated?
No, Counselman, you're being optimistic.
Oh, okay. I saw a lot of white there, it looked like it was fresh.
What's going on is that I just got a timeframe from the company, and they are going to be shipping the new bubble material on October 5th or 6th. They're going to be in town on October 15th, and they're going to, you know, construct it. And we're, optimistically, we're looking at the end of October to have it up and running with a brand-new bubble, and hopefully, there won't be any additional cost to the city. It looks like our insurance carrier is going to pay 100% less our deductible, which is fairly small.
Great, all right. Thank you. Reservoir Ave, I know last month, we mentioned that, I think to former Director Barone, did we get any update from the state regarding the potential paving of Reservoir Ave?
The paving of Reservoir Ave is still quite a ways away, they're still doing a lot of work, and my understanding of what's supposed to happen is they're going to finish the work that they're doing, and then take a look at how they're going to pave section by section, or if it's just going to be a one-shot thing. So it's still a little bit ways off. We'll stay on top of them to see what progress they make, but right now, we can't get a clear answer.
But it's still on the, on the docket and in the pipeline, I guess.
The intention is that once the curb cobs and all the paving and ripping up of pipes and lines and all that, then they're going to do it. So it's still a little bit ways off.
Okay, thank you. And Autumn Street, it looks like those pipelines are filled, I did walk by those, and it looks like they're filled in. Did we get any update on Oakland and Chestnut regarding problems water?
No, I actually don't have an update on that, if you could just, I can get back to you later.
Okay, that's fine. And then I have a few items that were actually sent to me today. A constituent reported a fire hydrant on Mapleton and Forest, on the corner of Mapleton and Forest. He said it's been leaking for a few weeks now. But see, I guess he sent something in to somebody, but it still seems to be leaking, so I just want to make you aware of that.
Okay, we'll follow up on that.
Okay, and then stop signs at the intersection of Belmont and Briar Cliff. I guess they've been tagged with graffiti, so I don't know if we have spears that we could go in and replace them with?
Belmont and what?
Briar Cliff. And you'll be able to tell this is from the same constituent, because I have one more. The street sign of Briar Cliff is hanging by, I guess hanging by a thread, so he's wondering if someone could go out and tighten that up. All right, Briar.
Okay, we'll follow up on that.
Okay, and one other, and this has been an ongoing thing, I guess 289 Legion Way. I got an email, I guess we reported some things going on with the neighbor, and this is about maybe a month ago. But they're concerned because someone came out and took pictures of the property that was in question. So the assumption is maybe this was someone from building inspections going out to do the inspection. Is there anywhere you can check with them to see if they were out there last week? Either inspecting the property or taking photos, because I guess one of the neighbors thought maybe they were being cased or something. So I just wanted to make sure it was building inspections and not something else.
Okay.
All right, and that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselman Backlaskis.
Thank you, Mr. Counselman President. I put four things on the counsel member.
I put four things on the council member communications. Three of them were foreclosed homes, that the grass was high and there were yard debris. The other one was Randall Street from Atwood Avenue to Green Avenue for trash and weeds overgrown on the sidewalk. I received communication today that they were taking care of, so I just want to thank the administration. Thank you.
Councilman Sido.
Thank you. Director Coop or Director Lopez, I have a public safety concern. Over the last couple of weeks, I've attended a number of events in Western Cranston, Hall Lane, Main Street, yes, that's where Main Street is, or Western Cranston, and Seven Mile Road. And there's a concern because we're not too far from the Anthony Fire Station. And that Anthony Fire Station is probably going to be closed very shortly. And it's bad enough that rescue response in that part of the city is twice what the average response is, maybe 12 to 16 to 20 minutes. And we have a mutual aid agreement with Coventry, I believe. So, the question is, if we handle that, if we follow that mutual aid agreement, is that going to leave residents in the western part of the city, the severe western part of the city, at risk? Are we going to honor it? Are we going to go over for mutual aid? Do we have any plans yet? Has it been discussed with the fire chief? Do we know what's going on there?
Yes, Councilman, that's a very good point and a very important and difficult issue. I've spoken to Chief McKenna, our fire chief, last week and again this morning. And he's been in touch with the fire chiefs in Warwick, West Warwick, and East Greenwich, who may also be called on to provide mutual aid. And we're working together to try to come up with a plan that would not leave the residents of Coventry high and dry if there is an emergency, but at the same time, would not leave Cranston residents, particularly those in Western Cranston, without adequate fire service. We are part of a mutual aid compact, and we will honor that mutual aid compact. But it doesn't require us to put necessarily our own citizens at risk by having insufficient services.
Okay, so it's a part of the plan, so if somebody from...
We're working on it, yes.
Do you know when it will be done by?
It's a work in progress.
Thank you.
Councilman Stychos. I just would like to note the departure of Jeff Barone, who I feel really did a very good job. He followed up on many issues that I had in my ward. And I thought he was a very professional person who was always had his eye on the ball, which was making the city a better place to live. And I think he's a real loss to the city. And I just wanted to mention what a good job I thought he did.
Councilman Vivek Yeo.
Thank you, Council President. I had sent something in that didn't make it to the written calendar, but I'll read it off anyway. I had a couple of issues. I'll take care of Councilman San Maria's question as well, to the administration on the resurfacing and repaving and some of the manhole issues. I had a number of complaints. Locksburg Drive, Cool Spring, the end of Park Forest, and the bottom of Mountain Laurel, where there are some manhole covers that are just sunken, and the roads are in pretty bad condition. And part of that is because the utilities, the water department, or the gas company, I'm sorry, repaved portions of Mountain Laurel and some other streets where they put lines in last year. Unfortunately, they only did a quarter of some streets, half of others, and they left the bottom half, which certainly wasn't their responsibility. But there are a few areas that I think if we could just look at them to see the... I know the trucks are working on Longview right now. And I don't know if they can, you know, while they're in the area, take care of a few of these sections, which are very small, but certainly burdensome. So, if you could do that, that'd be great. One of the other things that I wanted to put on was a request that we look into, probably the solicitor's office or maybe Mr. Coop. There's a section of the taxes, in the code, 3.6, chapter 3.60, talks about non-utilization tax on abandoned and vacant properties. And I'm thinking of looking at imposing that tax, which is like $100 per thousand, I believe, on properties that have been determined by the municipal court to be underutilized or abandoned. And my first, obviously, my first choice is that 15 Caffewano Drive, which has been a thorn in my side for a number of years. We have a lien already on it that's probably running close to $100,000 in value right now, and the bank that owns it just totally ignores us. I'd like to see us also hire a special counsel to maybe find a way to do something different, maybe to sue for the money damages from the bank that owns it rather than... Because the property is going to be worth less than the lien at this point. But I'd like to take a look at those items if I may. One other thing I did happen to, I want to give some congratulations to the fire department. I happened to come upon a fire yesterday in my district, on Poplar Drive. And I got to see the fire department in action, and it was, it brought it to reality. It was like a reality TV show, and you see the firemen coming out with soot and all sweaty. You know, they can put out a fire fairly quickly, and there were no serious injuries. But it was a pretty intense fire in a garage. Burned the automobile that was there, and luckily, they prevented it from taking over the entire home and the neighbors' homes as well. So, kudos to the fire department for their quick action in that case. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Old business, there's no old business this evening. So, introduction of new business. Will the clerk please read the new business?
We have proposed ordinance 9-15-01 authorizing the city to utilize Western Cranston Library and pack fees for Central Library Youth Services renovation to be referred to finance for hearing on October 15th. We have proposed ordinance 9-15-02 ratifying the Labor's International Union of North America contract, Local 1322, for fiscal year July 1, 2015, through June 30, 2018, to be referred to finance for hearing on October 15th. Proposed ordinance 9-15-03 authorizing the Director of Public Works to execute a grant of anisement relating to underground utilities for the Woods and Orchard Valley subdivision to be referred to Public Works for hearing on October 5th. The following are claims that we've received to be referred to the Claims Committee for hearing on October 5th. The following are property damage claims. Anthony C. Marcello from alleged incident on July 7, 2015. Jose Greerol from an incident on August 3, 2015. Robert Eiro from an incident on August 13, 2015. Kimberly Mansalillo from an alleged incident on August 16, 2015. April Kaput from alleged incident on August 9, 2015. And Glenn Barber from alleged incident on August 4, 2015. The following are personal injury claims. Christina E. Madonna from alleged incident on July 17, 2015. Roger DeRoche from alleged incident on August 18, 2015. And Francisco Maderas from alleged incident on November 16, 2014. That's all I have.
Okay. Is there a motion for all matters as read by the city clerk?
So moved.
Motion made, second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
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 Yes. Is there any other miscellaneous business on the clerk's desk?
None.
None. The city council's next regular meeting will be held on Monday, September 28. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I have motion to adjourn.
Second.
I...
I...
Go on, take it. September 28.
Yeah.
All right.